Okay, folks, we'll just go ahead and get started. I think most folks here know this in per se, it's Mary with town of Livingston. We are here for the flood mitigation grant. Okay, and I just thought it would be good for us to just center how the town hall meeting to kind of let the property owners that have been affected by the flood kind of was going okay in the process that we are going through. Since we have last talked, we have received from TMA some assessments and the assessments that you should have properly. I trust that everybody got one, that everyone all probably, okay, Marcia didn't get one? Oh, don't you say no, sorry. Okay, so, but anyway, so that's what we're here to talk about. And I know if the shoe was reversed, I would have a bunch of questions. So instead of me or Ms. Marcy Ackerman from Upper Cumberland Development District, which is helping us prepare this grant, Ms. Rebecca Clayton with the City of Livingston, which has been spot on on this. It has been a long drawn out process on Zoom because they can't travel right now is from TMA, Ms. Donna Holden from Tennessee Emergency Management Association. And so I just want to kind of, if there is questions, you can certainly direct them to me, but I'm probably going to refer along to Ms. Donna Holden from TMA so we can kind of get the process started, okay? So question, Mr. Collins?
Just a quick point of order, housekeeping. How are we going to handle question answers from property owners? Do you have a process you want to go through when people have questions?
No, no, I, raise your hand and you can ask as many questions. We could be here till 5:30 or we could be here till 8:30. There is no time limit. There's, again, this is truly just an open town hall meeting for the residents and property owners that was affected.
If they, if a resident wants to ask a question to this lady from TMA, do they need to go up to the microphone somewhere or?
Yeah, I think she can just, the microphones are obsolete right now.
Sure.
So this microphone is live, okay?
Okay.
So any, anyone that wants to come up, you can stand up in your chair or you can sit, I would recommend you come up and stand right here where Ms. Holden can see you. And all, but the main thing is so they can hear you out of this mic, okay? So we just kind of start with the, I guess I'll have to get it started. The assessments. Did everybody agree with their county assessment?
No.
Okay, that's what I would have said too, Pat. So Donna, we have got the paperwork and everyone has got that and I'm certain that they are going to reject the offer, that they don't agree with Oakton County's assessment. So can you tell us the next steps, please?
Okay, what they have included in the application is your, if you will apply them.
Oh.
Is that better?
Yes, please.
Okay, what they have done is in the application includes the cost of the appraisal. So once the body is approved, the city will seek out an appraiser, probably Beatty or however, whatever the procurement process is for the city, they will seek out someone who can do the appraisal of your property. What we have also done is included a contingency line item, so each of your properties are cushioned with an additional 20% thinking that it's more than likely appraisal is going to come back out with the tax part in. And we hope that 20% is going to give us enough on the cushion so we don't have to go back and ask for our costs over there. If it doesn't give us enough, we go back and say we need more money. That will be no problem. So, and if for some reason you're not satisfied with the appraised value that your appraisal assessed to that, you as the property owner have the right to decline. You can go out and seek to get your own appraisal of your property, but you need to understand that it's totally up to the city on to which one they will use.
Yeah, so Donna, I just, I just want to be, just for clarification here, so the City of Livingston is going to hire an appraiser and they will be appraising these properties that have been affected by the flood, is that correct?
Yes, sir, and you're going to track, we have chosen the option of going pre-event value and the best plan to start that in. Let's say today the house looks fine, everything is perfect on it, tomorrow it's hit with the flood. They're going to look at it based on the date, they're going to go in with gross total value. So if you have a gutter that kind of hanging off or something is wrong, they're not looking at it that, they're not assessing it so that you resell it. They are looking at it pre-event like it's never been there. Because that's how, that's all it's telling you, we want to know pre-event value versus cost. Cost looks at it as it is now.
Okay, we'll do it.
That would only apply, the City of Livingston is only going to appraise properties of the, of any individual that declines the assessed value in their letter today, right? Correct?
Now, the, the City of Livingston, all the properties, we have a total of six properties, all six properties will be appraised by the same company assigned. You will all receive, copy, you will receive an offer from the city based on that appraisal. If you are satisfied with that appraisal, you can go out and hire an appraiser to come in and appraise your property. It's just the city doesn't have to go with yours. It's up to them on which one they use. Now, the city, we will reimburse the city for the fault of the appraisal, yours will be totally out of your pocket.
Now, I've got a question, you was talking earlier about the 20%. I didn't quite understand what you said, Ms. Holden, about the 20%. Can you talk about that a little bit at least?
Let me, I want to bring up one on my computer, that way I can tell you exactly. I won't give the name of the property, anything, somebody gives you the number.
Okay.
So I have a tax card here that has, that has a value of $199,400. Well, we can provision that by 20%, so that 20% is an additional $38,080. So once the appraisal, once the appraisal comes in, we're calculating that that property wanted something to praise for. So that, because that property is at $228,400. Now, here's the caveat. If you still have an outstanding mortgage, it's going to be deducted from this. So anything that is outstanding, if you have a mortgage, if you have anything wrong, anything on it, it's going to be deducted out of that appraisal value. And I don't think any other property that's, well, I'm correct, nobody has flood insurance, so we don't have to worry about the issue of superpation of benefits or anything? Yeah, all, all properties, none of the properties have flood insurance, so that's not going to be concerned there.
Okay, so, any questions? I don't want to be the only one asking questions, are you ready?
Well, on, on my property.
You want to come up, Pat, that way she can hear you.
Okay. And she may have kind of said that. I'm Pat Austin and I had the, had several CBOs and was flooded. So it's completely good.
Okay.
So how would an appraiser go about?
It's complex. They're going to be, they're not, we're not concerned about it as far as that, it getting damaged. They're going to look at it as let's say you're building something, you decided to renovate something or build something that you get halfway through, you say, I often think of really business. So an appraiser will come in and you decide to sell, if somebody's going to buy this, we'll appraise that. Now, yours, when you have to ban, we're going to make sure that that appraiser understands that they're not looking at the building as far as getting damaged because of the damage. Take that out of the scenario. Just imagine that everything is still there, assuming you take out some of the drawwall and stuff like that.
Everything, just look out.
Okay, so they have to go in, that, that in their head, there's, there's drawwalls, unless everything is perfectly fine and nothing there.
A licensed appraiser will be able to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, based upon it was a function, it's a commercial entity, they'll be able to do that.
So.
So, who has the property that has, oh, sorry, Mr. Davidson?
He's not present today.
Okay, um, let's see, okay, Mr. Linder?
Yes, yep.
Okay, so I know what we still is that it is a commercial property, correct?
Yes.
So, a, a assessment for residential and residential will be totally different. Still look at it as if it had not been damaged, but it's new different.
Right. Pat, it's usually commercial.
So once these properties, let's hypothetically say that the appraisal is done and the property owner agrees to the appraisal value, all right?
Okay.
Then, once the grant funds are made available to the City of Livingston, then the City of Livingston is going to turn around, use those funds to purchase that property from the individual, is that how it works?
What, okay, so what is going to happen is the City of Livingston will write in this approval, will, I will put together approval package, they will receive approval letters, request a lot of pay requests, a court report, and then you have to guide the things, you guide them through the process and access them in 24 hours. There, this money comes into the state, it does not turn around and go directly to Livingston. This is a reimbursement process. They have to go get and acquire the property and submit that payment request to a Livingston court documentation and we reimburse them.
Who are you saying them, are you saying the city?
Not a matter of the money being deposited into Livingston, we're not going to give the money directly to Livingston and have them do everything and then send it to us. No, we have to be involved all the way throughout the process. They purchase, they submit, they get their appraisal done, they submit the copy of the, uh, the purchase order if they did. So if you have to run ads, write bids for the appraiser, will be a copy of the ad or however you do that, will be a copy of the bid package, will be a copy of what you put, as far as what you put in the paper, when you get that back, you'll send everything to us. We're, we're working all the way through the process.
Okay, so.
No, we don't just deposit it into them and then they just go. But go ahead, Pat.
Okay, just to clarify, then I think I understand you to say the City of Livingston is going to acquire the funds, we're going to, the City of Livingston is going to go and purchase the property from the property owner. And then you will, based upon all the teeth frosted and eyes dotted, then you're going to reimburse the City of Livingston, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we're not going to have the funds to go out and buy it, we have to come up with the funds, go buy the property at the agreed appraisal value.
Correct.
Submit it to them, then they reimburse the city.
That's right.
Okay.
Well, I don't understand.
I did not understand.
Well, I'm just wondering.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, go ahead. So let's say, sir, I'm Sarah Lutcherman.
Kelly, my name is Kelly.
Okay, sir, so what we, um, did I do this question?
I'm not a property owner, I'm one of the city council members that.
Okay, so what we would do is, so let's just use your property, let's take your property.
Okay.
Um, Marcie will, the appraisal is done and we will, with Marcie to see what they have, what it is that's bad, and you'll have your choice then there whether you want to go forward with it if, if you're satisfied. If you're satisfied with that, the next step would be for them to start to take care of the title search, which I would recommend that once they get approved, go ahead and start that process going to knock out. Because we want to make sure that nothing has happened with it. So once that's done, then they will set up a closing, you'll get everything taken care of and set up a closing then. On that day when you come in, as long as there's nothing outstanding on your property, if you got a clean and clear title, then you will get cash back, because the cash is the seller, at the bottom of the statement. Sign off on everything then, you get your cash, you get your check, or if you wanted to be direct positive wired into your account, it's done that way. When you walk out, there, you're done.
Okay.
If for some reason you're there and you have a pen in hand that you're going to sign and you just, I want to do this, you can put that pen down and walk out, no longer doubt. This, this program does not allow us to take your property, take personal property. It is 100% voluntary. So literally, you can get in there, they're closing, you get ready to sign, it's like, I don't need it, that's all.
Yeah, so.
For all costs, up until that point.
Right, so just to clarify.
Yes, sir.
At the end of the day, if, if one of the flooded homes agrees to sell, they're no longer going to own that property.
Nope, it belongs to the city.
Right, so.
Nothing can ever be dealt there.
That's the way this grant is set up.
Yep.
Did you know that?
In wartime.
That's the way this particular grant works. If you agree to the value that, that appraisal's been determined for, you're selling that property to the city.
Correct.
And you will no longer own it.
Correct.
Okay, okay, just want to make sure.
Yeah, and once the city, the city will be responsible for that property from, from here out. Nothing can ever be dealt there, you can, I always say, you can build anything you want here as long as the debt ramp walks. The goal is the less water is given, the less is driven, if there's a grant, a flooding event, you want that water to be able to flow through without being hindered, don't want to worry about something being knocked down and then pushed down stream and damage coming out. Uh, I can give you the names of a couple of jurisdictions, I'd be careful if you go and look and see what they've done with theirs. Lincoln County has a gorgeous park. They have pavilions in it, but it, it, it's a pavilion, so that's when it rains, that water can still flow and they, they feel lost up, that flooding in it, I have another community, they kind of set up like a fire watching, wood events and stuff like that. But the city will own that property and they can't do any, you can really, I would recommend not trying to link it, you don't want to be trying to make property money off of federally purchased property. Uh, with your home, with your buildings, your home stuff, if it is attached to the structure, you cannot take it with you. So if you have put in new cabinets into your home, I'm sorry, you cannot take them with you. If you put in a new HVAC system, you cannot, it's simply attached to that building, it cannot go with you.
Is the City of Livingston then required to demolish that property and return it to just a, a natural green space?
Yes.
So we have the city.
As far as I know in the application, they have said, uh, nothing was listed as far as which you want to leave the space afterward. If you all want to meet, I'd say the city council, or the mayor, and all, we can discuss, turn it into some type of park, a playground, a softball field, something like that, then you can, y'all can discuss that and let me know. You just can't, we don't want anything that is fixed there. But outside of the pavilion, so if you have like a softball field, you don't want to tear a concession stand, you want something that you can roll in and roll out.
Does the grant include funds to reimburse the city for demolishing the property?
Yes, that's part of the budget.
Okay, thank you.
The budget, here, I'll give you a rundown, the budget includes the appraisal, fair market values, causing cost, legal, no, causing cost, less legal fees, demolition of the property, and termination of water and sewer. Everything has to be removed, so if you have a sidewalk that has to come out, if you get driveway, pool, if all of that has to come out.
Donna, I, I have a question. If, in the event that some of the property owners will go through the process, will dot their i's, will cross their e's, that at the end of the day, one or two, three property owners just reject the appraisals of the city, they reject their own appraisal that they get, and they're no longer going to sell, but three others don't.
Knock out.
Yes, so.
It doesn't feel important, it's just moving. What, here's what I always tell my jurisdiction, just, if you have a property owner, say early on, they're looking at appraisal, they don't like it, depending on where that property is located, I don't want to throw that property just yet, I'll leave it in there, because what we find is, is once they start demolishing, your property, your property value is, because nothing else will be there. So a lot of times it happens when people walk out, no one more than they realize their neighbor's house is gone, the house cost sheet's gone, and the rest of the houses in there are gone, and nothing else will ever go there. Yes, they may like to keep quiet, but it does nothing for their property better. And they usually end up opting back in. And if they don't, they don't, just, you know, down the line, you're going to have, you have to realize that you're still in, on play, of play.
Yeah, so I was going to ask that question. I was going to ask that question. So you opt out of the program, okay? And lo and behold, unfortunately, we have another flood that comes through and this property gets flooded again. But we bought all the other properties other than one or two. Where are we at then? We start?
If, if they decide for some reason, oh, God, I don't know, and they come to you and you have the city unwilling to do another project, then you can come back in and work it again.
Okay.
But, I would follow the command that you reached out to your blood, uh, blood control, uh, your blood plane administrator, because you want to make sure, the goal is, you want to make sure that one of the things about this program, we have some people that at the end of the day, they're all affected for themselves because they're making a lot of money off the planes, the trucks planes that they're making every time they get damaged. And I literally have a property in Nashville like that continues to look and get their hands on and watching the number of planes that you make, so at, at some point or another, it's going to come down to a point where you're going to capture that flood insurance. So that, that's taken care of, because your real life homeowner's insurance is not covered in damage near flood that's been flooded there.
Okay.
So, but if you choose to come in later on and for some reason you're just not satisfied at all with the offer, no, it's totally your choice, nobody supports you, nobody's going to damage your property, that's up to you. And if for some reason this is next month later or a year later, you've gone through a couple of victims, you decide to want to participate again, you reach out to the mayor, and it's up to the city if they want, they have to put the money in front of the first place. So they have to decide whether they want to participate in that, it's up to them. No mistake in that force of jurisdiction to buy your property. No, like, nobody can, no, no one supports the city, because at the end of the day, they got to make sure they have the money to do this and COVID jacked up, like, excuse me, but it messed up a lot of budgets last year. When we went into that fifth year, everybody had planned for their money for their city, their jurisdiction, and then we entered the alternate universe. And a lot of that money didn't plan for projects, it stuff had to go to taking care of that whole nightmare and dealing with that. So there's a lot of jurisdiction through budgets which was totally messed up, so the, but for Livingston being willing and able to do this right now, that, that says a lot for how they think of their citizens, their citizens and all, and they're willing to try to do something. Because I bet some of them just like, no, they can't do it.
Ms. Donna, earlier you asked if there was a representative running for the Davidson family? I think you had, you had a question and one of the, Mrs. Davidson has just arrived.
Ms. Davidson, I was explaining, um, someone asked earlier about the assessments. So what is going to occur is the city is going to hire an appraiser to appraise your property. Your property has a home and a business on it.
Yes.
And you'll have a commercial appraisal and a regular, cool residential appraisal. The property is going to be, both properties will be appraised if they have never received any practice damage from flood. So, as a example, like we did, if you've ever sold, you bought some property before, you know, the water needs to be prepared, composed, the value, how much your property get appraised for. So if you got government pay off or something, you need to pay, then the person is buying your property, you can say, well, if you knock off this, this, and this, we'll take care of that, don't worry about it. With this, nope, they're going in with both cost less, the, the bees, the flowers, everything is perfect. They're not going to see any other damage or anything that needs to be fixed. And for some reason, you do not like the appraisal for either property, you will well within your life to hire an appraiser to come in and appraise your property and see where the appraisers, what they give us the appraisal for. However, it is totally up to the city whether they use your appraisal or theirs. Yours is going to come out of your pocket, you're always going to pay for the rear bumper of the water, you have to do what the city gives us, city contracts, with the, with it between the state and the city. And we'll probably call for that, but if you decide you don't like that appraisal, you can hire somebody and the city can decide if they want to still live it. What we have done is we built in a 20% cushion, um, if they share the tax part of living, you know, where the children, that's that, so it's 20% times that, that value. And that is hopefully covered the difference between what the appraisers want to do, we're thinking that that on top of that is going to get us worried about some of your appraisal value funding. When you go in, you sign for closing day, you're going to have to go in there for some reason, you'll get ready to sign, and you just don't think you want to do it, pretend that, I'm sorry, you can't do it, I, I, I feel like it's just too important. You want the land, the home is out, and the lady can come in and give you anything and link to this project, they can't give you your property and then come back and say, okay, we got it, we're going to buy it. Nope, they won't do it, you can't do it. Nope, they won't do it, you, you can't do it. So if there's anything, even if your husband was concerned about your water, most of that, and if I don't know the answer, and no shame, and saying my brain is no mother, I'll have to get back to you on it.
I don't think I have any questions.
One of the things that I wanna know on the appraisals, I've been looking at houses, and I cannot find a house in Livingston comparable to mine for less than a hundred twenty-five thousand. Is this gonna be a low, low-ball appraisal, or is it gonna be compared to the prices that things are now?
So I'm, I'm not an appraiser.
I know.
But I, I think-
That's gonna make a big difference.
I, I, I mean, we are gonna hire a, a, a truly certified appraiser, that, that hopefully has got some history. Hey, they don't have to do the job, okay? Uh, they're certified to do the job, and they've got long years of experience in doing the job. Uh, so, uh, I don't know the proper steps, I mean, appraiser, but it's, uh, you know, it's gonna be a very comparable, I mean, there's some comparables in there. Uh, so, to answer your question, I, I think that you'll get fair market value.
I was gonna say, when I still have the original letter that we got in the mail, and it does state that, uh, your appraisal is for fair market value.
Right, fair market value. Fair market value.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, to be fair market value. And, and what Donna has said a couple of times, that at any time that you wanna withdraw from the program, and I'll tell you, yeah.
And you can always-
But I don't have a choice, I've been employed twice.
Uh-huh. And you can get your own appraiser.
Right, appraiser.
So do you feel like that the city will go, that you all will be the ones that's deciding on the appraisal value? Do you feel like you'll go with the-
I mean, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna hire an appraiser.
Yeah.
You know, someone that-
But when he gives his prices, do you think you all will agree, um, you know?
I, I can speak on behalf of the board of aldermen, but I'm gonna give you-
What's your, what's your procurement process? Do you have to, is it, is it a matter that you have to let them get three bids? Or service or something?
But we, we don't necessarily have to, but the board of aldermen may, may want to do that.
Okay.
So, uh, you know, we plan on talking about this Tuesday night. I'll have it on the agenda. So-
So like I told you earlier, what you can do is, when you get ready to do this, um, let Dan sort, get the list, and on you is gonna give you, right now, we have a cost of appraisal being seven fifty each.
Being what, what'd you say?
I have-
Seven hundred and fifty each.
Yeah, I have, yeah, so I have certain jurisdictions. It really depends on the jurisdiction, I'm so quality-
That's about it, I would react for you. If I was a board member, I would spend the money to get my own appraisal. Just, just to have a comparison. You know?
Okay, so once we get the, uh, what they'll do is, like I said, you'll, you'll put your bid package together, you'll send it to me, because there's particular language, I have to make sure that it ends up being a package before you do that. Once you do that, you'll send it to me, I will review it, if I see what's be, be there, then I will send you a letter, letting you know you're good to move forward with letting bids. Once you get your bids back, and you and the council have voted, decided on which company appraisal team you're gonna use, before you do, you do your contract, I will need to see that contract again, because I gotta make sure it's not that annoying again. You will get another letter from me telling you to move forward. You will do this all in the calendar, so you don't worry about going down, waiting for the mail. As soon as I get it, I need to pretty good about turning those around the same day that I receive it. Once you get that, you get your contract, sign it off, you'll be getting a copy of the sign. And you can move forward, bring to your, get your appraisal. But it's gonna have to be somebody like you, it has to be a certified appraiser. It has to be somebody that's certified, that your appraisal is going to be.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to talk about, Ms. Poston just asked a question about the, um, uh, about the, uh, uh, appraiser and the appraisal that will come in. And that, uh, let's just say that, uh, that we hire an appraiser, we go through all the process that we're supposed to go through. Uh, the appraiser that the city hires comes back with a property at a hundred thousand, uh, but, uh, someone, one of the property owners hires an appraiser that comes back at one sixty, okay? So, so, I, I mean, I, I would think, and this is new to me, okay? Do, could, could we, is FEMA only going to pay for what the city appraiser has appraisal value? Or can we sit down with that property owner, our appraiser, their appraiser, and have some kind of mediation to come to a, a number? And with FEMA, the three-
No, it has to be based on that appraisal. So, if Ms. Poston's appraisal comes back a hundred sixty thousand, then the city has the choice of going to the, the price thing that they receive or return. It doesn't, but we're always gonna cover the cost of the one that's suspended, because that's a part of the project. This, that, and the poston, if you were to get hired, and that's completely, that's completely out of your pocket. Now, if the city can use, to use yours, that is totally fine. If the city wants to use that one, they can do it, and, and, and for some reason, it comes back higher, or, you know, it absorbs all the costs of what we have estimated for with that process cost, that is property, then we can go back and ask for a cost of the money, FEMA to get some additional money, to pick up anything extra that it may cost. Very well, by the time, by the time it's approved, um, demolition costs may have gone up. So we may have to go back for additional money. Or, depending on who's done demolition, it could be your public works that do the demolition, so what is to happen, hire somebody, y'all even, you're in for, like, hiring somebody to do the basic testing and stuff like that.
Right.
To detect more aggressive, and, you know, their tanks, and, and your combination of the water and stuff. It may not have cost as much for the city to do everything up to that point. So whatever's left over, I have an option of lowering to find some coverage of additional cost. So if something comes back, if for some reason, legal fees are a little higher, but I've got enough money left over out of the demolition cost, I can go that, so we don't have to wait for FEMA to approve.
Yeah, Ms. Donna, I have a couple of questions for you.
Yes, sir.
Let's get to the real nitty-gritty here. Is the money, is our application, City of Livingston's application, in good standing and in order with you?
Yes, I am currently, Marcy, now that we've gone back and forth, we've already submitted it to the litigation council for review. And that way, we can get on the rank and order, how they're gonna be committed. I am doing a personal review, see what's missing, if there's anything I need to make sure we have. But I've already told Marcy, I've sent it to Rebecca for her to quit, for the mayor's signature. We're gonna start entering this into the FEMA system by the second.
Okay.
By this Friday, we will start entering again.
Okay, so, within a week, we're gonna enter it in the FEMA system. What happens after you enter in the FEMA system? And how long does it take to ensure that we've got the funds appropriated for this program?
Okay, so, so that everybody understands this. This is not a fast process. Your project is being funded out of the disaster that happened in May of twenty twenty. The declaration was given, president signed the disaster declaration on July the ninth. So we have one year from that date to have all applications in. So keeping that timeframe in mind, currently, I have projects that are in Atlanta from the disasters from February of twenty nineteen. The deadline date for those applications to be submitted was April seventeen of twenty twenty. I only have four projects from that probably approved. That disaster had, I think, ten projects headed to the sub projects, and out of that, we only have four approved. It is not a fast process. Between yours and this, we have disaster forty-four seventy-one, forty-four seventy-six, forty-four, forty-five, forty-one. So those are the, those are the disasters we've already processed. We submitted, and they were doing them in order, we did make, yes, but Marcy and I, we're trying to go back and forth, and we make sure everything that I can think FEMA is going to ask for is there. So there won't be any backing for from them. They, we want to submit a whole, solid application, so it can get to their review process, and you're welcome like that. But it could be, it could be six months to a year.
Okay, so, so six months to a year before we have a guarantee that the funding is approved for?
Before you have a FEMA approved project, it gives you six months to a year. I've had it, the longest I've had it take is a year and a half. Um, the, the office that handles the state of Tennessee, FEMA Richard Ford, is out of Atlanta. They are responsible for Kentucky, Tennessee, North Carolina, South Carolina, Florida, Alabama, Georgia, and Mississippi. As we roll on into this year, you know, we're gonna come upon a third thing. Depending on the magnitude of an event, that changes a whole law game. So that could be a, a all hands on for them. And whereas, when we have a disaster, we have to work both, what we have had going, and what's going with that event. With FEMA, they don't really have that option, because if they have to go out in the field, it's not like they can pack up that stuff and break with them to work on it. They have to focus on what's in front of them right then, until they get back to the office. Lord, well, we almost, the government shut down. And if they shut, the government's down for some reason, you know how they have to lose a budget each year? If for some reason, somebody wants to play power stuff, and it doesn't get approved, and they shut it down, that means that nobody in the office can do anything. Those that they can see and consider the employees, the upper management, for whatever reason, they don't feel like they should, except they jack to this. So, just keep that in mind, that there could be stuff that can interfere. But if everything goes right, and nothing is in the way, you're looking at about six months to a year before you get approved.
Once the appraisal is made, then we have the green light, the city does, to start, um, buying property? The funds are there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Okay, so what will occur is, you will get an approval, approval package, like you said, you'll get a letter from the state. Congratulations, your project is getting approved. And, so you will get, the city will get that, and a couple of months' salary, everything. Then the date of the letter of approval, your project should get started. You don't have to wait. What holds everything up is, is just the contract state. So, you literally go get your entire project. I just can't reimburse the city until we have an executive contract in place.
Okay, so, so no, no appraisals? The city doesn't need to go out and start soliciting bids for, from appraisal companies? Property, individual property owners shouldn't go out now and start hiring their own appraisals, if that's what they choose to do? They don't need, we don't need to start this process at all until the program is approved, correct?
Yes, and if you do any of that, you do prior, so someone will kill the project.
Okay.
You have, you have to have a FEMA approval, it has to be approved like we were beforehand, before you can, we can start, you can do anything.
Yeah.
We only reimburse what is under the bridge.
Yeah, and, and Ms. Poston, I'm sure that we will, as, as we always do, either electronically or through snail mail, get a letter to notice to proceed, is that correct? Are we getting a notice to proceed?
She said we do.
Yes, sir, you'll get a, you'll get an approval package. And it'll just be an email, we'll send it to you an email.
Okay.
Well, would the city be smart to go ahead in the next few months and begin the process of selecting appraisal companies? Or do we wait until, you just-
I, I really wouldn't, because if you're doing that, you're doing that at your own expense, and it's part to approval of a project.
So once the approval is given for the project, then the ball starts rolling, and it could take another several months for us to select appraisals, have appraisals done, evaluate the appraisals. It could take another six months-
Or a year.
If, now, if you're not, I've got, I've, the twenty-ten floods, Davidson County had six projects, we mean, the least about five, we did those four projects, and one of the projects was thirty-four projects. It didn't take them that long. It's not gonna take you that long, not for six projects.
Okay.
As soon as, if, if everything went right, not to mention this application tomorrow, and it got approved money, and we got the notification to use that money, that day, you need to go ahead and start, so what I, here's what I would do. Start putting your bid package together, whatever you want. That part you can get, it's not doing any type of, anyone outside of the program, not kind of left to this, but you can start gathering the data.
We can get-
Okay, we're, we're gonna be thinking, we're gonna be looking at turning someone to the appraisal. That's how our partnering, how we wanna do, we wanna do an appraisal of two on this street at a time, and we want to, you know, two at a time, all that, while we want that. And just start putting, putting that stuff together. And that's it, just stop there, don't do anything else, and I'll put it in a quick, we don't do nothing else.
Yeah, but we can go ahead and get the bid proposals to her, review, approve, so that when it's approved, we've got at least that process. Because she said she has to review it.
Because the subject's not approved. You can just, you can have everything ready, like, we like to say, having projects on the shelf from different jurisdictions, other than we have a disaster. All we have to do is go, hey, such and such committed application, for this amount, please, let them know, update citizens, and stuff, and pull it off the shelf. It's sitting there waiting for help. That's what you want to do. You don't want to tip it out, you don't want to do anything, you just want to start gathering. I can't approve anything until, I can't approve your bid package stuff, until that rank is up to you.
But, but if, if Marcy and Rebecca, if Marcy and Rebecca have some questions, uh, Donna, I know you've been really, really good to them, uh, they, they can reach out as we start, yeah, as we start collecting data and information. Uh, okay? Do, do you have a, a sample, excuse me, a sample form? Uh, that, that, the check, checklist, kind of, of what this package that you don't-
What you need to do, what you need to do, your next step or stuff? What I, here's what I will do, um, one of the things that I do is, I have reached out to different project managers, different types of projects throughout the state, to create manuals. Because there are some things that, as the state, it, it wouldn't dawn on me to ask for a city. The stuff that, that concerns already, that you would click on it, just like, when we got FEMA places, like, the people in front of the stand for the pedal, you need to bring it to, what it's on us. So I have somebody who gives a piece when it comes to acquisitions. This woman knows her thing, she worked it from all sides. She worked in state, she worked in federal, she worked contractor, and now she, she actually came to work for us during the two thousand and ten floods. And we just didn't pay enough, her, to give up her contract, uh, she comes one person, but now she works for Metro. And her boss is like, yes, that's no problem. Just like I had the same type of range unit when it comes to safety range. I got a young lady out of Dixie County. The girl who put safety in every school in her county, except maybe one. But she understands the process, and what needs to be asked, and what needs to be done on a local point of view, but, yeah. Same thing for my Metro, so I'll be with Marcy and this coming together, and that way, if there's something that Marcy just, I don't, I'm not sure what they're asking for here, how would you feel about Jesus, well, how do you sense this? Because one of the things that can hurt, I can't give you recommendations, reminders, on anything. Yes, well, well, what you talk about with another city here- Yes, well, well, wouldn't you talk about with another city here, a district?
Right.
She can tell you her process, she can tell you, I've used this company before, I can give this group, they are loud and what they do, don't give, I can't do that. But, and I would really wouldn't know if they're not wanting directly to me, they're wanting directly to me. So that's what you want, so I wanna be able to link you up with her, uh, I'll put Mar, her and Marcy together so that she can pick her brain, find out how do you do this real quick, what are the steps that you take to? Is there anything I need to do now immediately to make this look truthful?
Okay, thank you.
Anybody got any part two, is there anything for concern about? Where's the map?
She's asking if you have any.
Yes, ma'am, is there anything that you're concerned about now?
Nothing else that I know, I don't know.
She said nothing else right now, but she knows of.
Okay, if, if you have any questions, reach out to Marcy, she has that, give me twenty-one cents.
Y'all plan on buying it?
If, if you're in the program.
It's in the program?
You're not in the program, are you, Carl?
I don't know.
Yeah, I think you elected not to be in the program. Yeah, so, un, unless you wanna get in the program.
Well, I'm seventy-five thousand in the hole right now, the state of it is seventy-five thousand.
And you got a hundred and two.
I don't know. And what y'all need to consider is one more thing. When the road was built the first time, it's a forty-two inch high under the, under land level. It's a metal, creased thirty pipe. Will fifty years be the life of it, or you create the path and lock it up and then it won't be no harder for it?
Well, that's something.
That's different, baby.
Yeah, it is, it is.
That's not.
Is there, is there?
Well, I'm not laughing, but yeah, good, baby.
Does anybody have any, any questions, uh, to, uh, Miss Donna Holden, uh, in this process? If, if you do, and, and I just wanna be really, really clear here, I mean, wanna be completely transparent. Nobody, it is not anyone's intention in this room from the city side to blow off your property. That's not it at all. But a fair market back is, is, I think, what they're looking for, what we're looking for and going from there, okay? And, 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 I mean, I still believe there's some honest appraisers out there and that we'll get a fair market back.
And FEMA's gonna reimburse the city for whatever appraisal.
That's right, that's right.
Yeah.
Well, I think what gave people the doubt of being scared is when, and I know they appraised their value of our property after the flood so we wouldn't have to pay as much property tax, so we understood all that. But then when you come to sign a paper, you know, and you've got twenty or thirty thousand dollars on there, that's what made people feel like.
But, but it would make, but that's, it's a process.
Yeah, yeah, that's what made us feel, like, are we?
It would make too.
Yeah.
No question about that. You know, that's why I started to question is, is everybody happy with the appraisal thing that they got? And I figured I'd be yelled at, no, and I didn't hardly get yelled at, but the answer was no, uh, for the consensus in the room, but, uh, so. So this is where we are. Uh, I, I, I hope that when folks leave here today, they've got the answer to their questions. Uh, I've got this item on the agenda every month at the city council meeting, every month. Miss Marcy and Miss Rebecca will be there, uh, probably won't be fortunate to get Miss Holden every time, but if you, if, if you do have questions though, if you will reach out to anyone with the city, we will direct your questions and answer them to you individually, or we will answer them to you publicly. Or if nothing happens.
I think it's, I think it's also important just to add, or as a mayor, that as far as I know, the city's learning here too.
That's right.
You know, the city hadn't been down this route before either.
That's right.
And I think it's pretty clear based on what Donna's telling us that this is a very, very laborious, slow, federal government program that you've gotta have every eye dotted, every T crossed perfectly. And so, I, of course, we're in the Fedex to the property owners, but we're learning too.
We're, we're learning too, and, and make no mistake about this. Uh, we're, as, as Kelly said, I don't wanna be redundant to, to, we have sympathy certainly for the ones that has lost their homes and, and had some problems with their businesses and, uh, but this, this is work. And, I mean, these folks are out here, uh, anytime you deal with a grant from the state of Tennessee or the federal government, I mean, it's a job. I mean, and you can see how serious it is, and Miss Holden is telling you every step of, of the way to go. But it's slow, 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 slow. And that's why I have it on the agenda because I feel like it's something that maybe we will slow rolling this a little bit. And that, that just simply wasn't the case. And then we got a email from, uh, Mr. Warden from Tena that he sensed went back and retract. Uh, but we're in this thing together, I mean, I live in the neighborhoods that you all live in, so. Uh, but, but before we dismiss, is there any other questions that we have from, from the audience?
I do know, but somebody might have already asked it before I've gone.
Okay, we'll answer it.
If, uh, all the, um, appraisals come back in and we just decide, no, I don't wanna go that way. And the next year our property floods, is the city still going to be so gracious as to bring out the pumps and the pipes and do all that stuff and?
Well.
Or are you kinda just on your own with that?
So, so, that, that question wasn't asked for, not about the pumps. But in the event that, this is a half the properties take the appraisal value according to what Miss Donna said. Uh, and the other half decide not to, or two decide not to, then, and then you think, well, hey, you know what, I've been fed through for times, I wanna start the process. Then we start the process all over again. It's, it's, you know, as far as normally, when we have as much rainfall as we had in that event uh, in Livingston, Tennessee, most of the time is not the only community that has been hit with that kind of rainfall. So, uh, normally what happens and the reason that we get those bunks is through Tena. So, so there's a declaration declared, uh, first by Oakley County, they can then enter. And then it goes on to the governor, and then it'll go on to the President of the United States to declare emergency. So when that happens, then we get access quickly to what FEMA or FEMA asks for us. And that's how the pumps come out, Mickey is in here and he went and got some, uh, after the declaration had done. The city, uh, police was around the clock, uh, and we've got all of that documented, and so I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, and we appreciate it, because had the pumps not been in and been there around the clock, man, it would have been a lot worse.
Oh, sure, it was, sure.
Well, and I think ultimately to, to add to that, the city would love to have a long-term solution to that problem.
Right.
Um, but, you know, unfortunately, based upon the engineering's recommendation, it's, you know, it's a multi-million dollar project and I don't, it's, it's, it's a long-term, it's a long-term problem that we've just got to keep trying to figure out how we can solve it. But Donna did say, I think Mayor did just say, you could choose, Miss Davidson.
Right.
If you decline now.
Right.
You, if you were to get flooded in yourself, I wanna, I didn't do a thing, but I wanna, I can, you can do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we would start the process now.
Right, right.
So just know that.
Maybe start all over.
You can start all over, so you could be in a, as, as Miss Holden says, she's got some back from twenty nineteen. And then I also heard her say that, I think I did, uh, that her region, uh, takes care of Florida too. And we know what's going on in Florida right now. Uh, did I hear that correct, Miss Donna?
Yep, cause as far as, well, the, especially in that song, they had FEMA get ready to go and with the building that collapsed. When it came to, now, when it would not be our team, the group that I worked with going on the run, that still that pulled people away. And like, right now, it's not a common thing to go to that area.
I, I, I.
Get us things right now.
Yeah, I, I do wanna, I, I do wanna ask you a question that you brought up too. Is, is there a pecking order, ranking order on, uh, cause you, you brought up with, in hurricanes, okay? So is there a way that our application gets, continues to kinda, gets pushed down, 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 down? Or once we submit, our application stays right there, nobody changes?
It's, you know, it's based in that order, like now, he is working, our, our, our federal league, he is working on approving projects out of forty-four twenty-seven. And that was the disaster that declared in two thousand and nineteen. After that, his next step will be forty-four seventy-one and so on. So he, he tries to go in the merit order, he does have a team, but also now he went next. We're still working, like, before we got on the call, I was checking on another project because I still have to, all of my previous disaster project and managing those and the payment, like, this is, we're doing that. He's doing kind of the same thing on this one, closed out and stuff. But I wanted to stress this, and the mayor said something. If you have any questions or concerns, do not hesitate to reach out. However, there is an order, there's a couple of orders to this. And I can get my hands slapped, you really hate me to do this, my owner would call me directly. It's calling, you call me, I'm gonna answer no matter what. But you're, you're part of contact, it's not between the mayor and Marcy. So if you have any questions or concerns, definitely reach out to me and they have my cell number. And when I say my cell, just what I'm gonna call, three, four, seven, two, two, five. So if you've got a question, you know, get me right there, leave me a voicemail and I'm gonna call you back, or send me an email. And I'll probably get back to you. I'm better with my phone, I get an email, I get the way to. We clean that and wait for talking to people, so, but, and just send your, send your questions and concerns through them, um. Bring it in, anybody outside of the project is not making moves faster and unfortunately, it's quite a honest and fair for anybody else who has gone through the process. Because somebody, the political connection they have and both, it, it, it's not gonna really be moving faster. And, and I've had some here that's called FEMA, they're gonna get turned around, the homeowners are called directly. They're gonna turn around and tell you, you contact your city or whoever you're, you're advocating with. They're gonna tell you to contact them or the state. So just so you know, there is a order to this. If, if you're, you're welcome, you're right to make those calls, but they're not gonna tell you, FEMA's not gonna give you any information on the project. You're gonna have to go back to no local or to the state, which requires you that.
Thank, thank you, Donna. Again, before we dis, uh, before we dismiss, is there any questions, uh, from anyone? That there's some?
Okay, I have a question there, did anybody have thought of, of their flood problem?
Yes, yes.
And I mean, where it was damaged.
Yes, we, we have that.
Okay, so make sure you, I, I think I've talked some for some, um, cause I'd like, it's part of the story. For them to actually see that, where that water was in, to see the damage that it did. It, it, cause people who are reviewing this, they're not permitted or just new.
Right.
So we're, we're telling a story, we're, we're, we're selling itself. We're, we're trying to convince them that this is, the, the distance is none of the waters of that is over, they have a tax cut two hundred and seventy-six thousand. So we don't have to deal with the cost amount, it's so good. But you want to be able to, you want them to see what you're talking about, like when we're explaining such and such happened this day, and so if you have three events for your home or your business was flooded and you take pictures of that and the marketing years that it hurt, I mean, I won't copy to that, so I'm gonna put that in the application. And then you'll have everyone in this room, from this day forward, if you ever get flooded again, take pictures, document, whatever you can do, have a list, make a call to repair it, make copies of those receipts, put them in a safe place, let them on the jump drive, keep the two separate copies, put it in safe places. Let every event document each event, because that tells a story. And if we should have another side of your community that's damaged and those of this, let them know what they need to do from here on out, so that it makes it so much easier to get this done, but it's just better for you.
Okay.
And I'm done.
Okay, I, I just got, I just got one, one, uh, question, okay? I, I think everyone here was gave an assessment, uh, of their, of their properties. And so, uh, it is my understanding that, uh, if you want to turn those in today, uh, saying that, um, you accept or decline, uh, then you can do that, um, or do it at your leisure. If you don't have it with you, that's fine, you can bring it back tomorrow.
That doesn't lock you in, you signed it, that, that's just saying that you accept, this is what it says it's gonna be. It's understood that we're gonna do the project.
Right.
But FEMA wants to make sure that we, we didn't just pick somebody's property to do this, we want to know what that, that you signed up to do, you're willing to do that.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think, we're gonna have that problem, I think everybody's rejected, I think.
But the form has to be turned in?
The form needs to be turned in.
By date, is there a date?
We, we didn't, we didn't say the date.
Okay, when do the photographs need to be turned in? Aren't you, you're saying you want it to turn in with the application?
If you could get them tomorrow, please, so if you start getting them tomorrow, between now and the end of, before the end of week, that will be great, cause all we have to do is convert the media and I will attach them to the rest of your property information.
Yes.
So we're going to start sending it out, why?
Okay, Donna, what, what we're gonna do?
Yes, sir.
What, what we are going to do here is, we already have some photos, but any extra photos that we don't have, please bring to us. And we want you all, everyone, to see the application that we turn in. I mean, if it, if we don't have the, if you got better pictures that tell your story better, then we will do them, a copy of them. Uh, and then we, we will give you a copy of the application that we actually turn in.
I thought we don't turn it around.
But we have, but the assessment, that's what she's saying, when you, when they turn that in, and she's asking for if anybody's got pictures. We have pictures.
Right.
We've been turned in pictures, but if they have more that tell their stories.
Should they just bring them to, to, or back?
Right.
Okay.
I think, uh, Marcy said we're gonna have to go and take pictures tomorrow and that'll be going all the way around the property's front, sides, and back, so.
But by the end of the week, if you've got specific pictures that you want?
Yeah, absolutely.
Get them.
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right. One more quick question that I have. In, in general, about how long assuming all the paperwork's in order, once, um, the city has paid or purchased, closed on a piece of property, you know, we, we, the city has used its funds to buy the property. About how long does it take you to reimburse the city?
Okay, so here's how I have it, I have two cats, two puppies on Cat Street, two puppies on Bradford Creek and Q L West. So I would recommend you do the, do it something like that and submit a payment with it and then.
Miss Donna, that's not my question, I'm sorry.
Have you dealt with Edison?
Edison?
No, yes, so, uh, Donna, yeah, so I, I, if, if you, if I'm, excuse me. Uh, I, I, I think the, the question was, how quick of a turnaround is the city?
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying. If you have to deal with Edison, I can refer it to send it to my business team tomorrow. I can't tell you it's gonna take ten, twelve days to say, it, I, it varies, it, it is Edison. If you have done anything in Edison, you know it's gonna move that system, it's gonna move fast, um.
My experience about six months.
In the fifteen days, maybe?
In my experience?
Maybe fifteen.
Fifteen days.
But I, I don't know, once I do my part, I don't know how long it's going to take.
Okay.
Rebecca, how long would it take for you to get reimbursed?
I don't have any, so, I don't have a small, because when I do my part, it goes into the military physical system, and it goes downtown to the physical system downtown. I can't control that, we don't, we don't push the money to your account, that's done in a whole different section of state business.
But generally within, generally within a thirty day term?
Possibly. I won't, I won't make you that promise, hopefully, we can get it done within thirty days. I've seen it done in thirty, I've seen it done in fifteen, but I cannot make that promise, I don't know how long it will take.
But it shouldn't take six months.
No, no.
Okay, because if the city outweighs this kind of money, the city's got to have some assurance.
You need to get it back to your account.
Yeah, okay.
I understand, you need to get it back, yeah, you need to reduce those funds, because that other thing you need to take care of, I get it. Yeah, I just, on that part, sir, I don't have any control. You have two physical sections, you will send it to me, I will do it, document it, and verify everything that's been given to me, then it goes to military difficult, and then once it goes into the system, it goes to, goes into the Edison system, and it's from downtown. The good thing is, it's an eighty-eight, so it's direct deposit, you're not going to wait for a check to come in the mail.
Thank you so much.
It's going to go directly into your account.
Thank you, Donna, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any other questions?
How long will the city allow us to stay in our house once we close? Will it be a month, or will it be three months? Because we have to have money to buy new plumbing. And I, we don't have thirty grand to fork up and put down our house.
So, I, I, I think the process, you're going to know as this process continues, okay? I think you're going to know in advance, thirty days in advance, whether the city is going to buy your property or not, okay? Uh, you know, this is not going, you know, obviously happen overnight.
Yes.
Uh, so, the, you know, all of this will go right in front of the board of all. Uh, all the, when we select the appraiser, uh, and the property values will go in the board of all, and we'll vote on that. Uh, and, uh, and you will know before it goes to the board.
Okay, because finding a place to rent is almost impossible.
Ma'am, we're not going to kick you in the streets.
Yeah.
And that's not, not a, okay, I promise.
We just need somewhere, some kind of timeline, because we have two of them, and he has a lot of toys and stuff.
I'm sure, I'm sure. So, we will give you as much notice as we possibly can, okay?
Well.
Okay, is there any other questions? Donna, thank you so much, folks, thank you all so much. Thank you all so much for coming out, I hope this has been a very informative meeting, and, uh, thank you all for coming. Thank you, Donna, bye-bye.
Okay, if you need any time, can you reach out to?
Okay, thank you, bye-bye.